Welcome everyone to Ashland Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, January 23rd. Reminder to everyone that that meeting is being broadcast and recorded. First on our agenda, well first I will call the meeting to order on time at 7:15. And second, we go to the Clerk's Report.
Thank you Madam Chair. We've had three emails since the last meeting. One of the, going back a meeting, I forgot to ask if anyone responded on behalf of the Board. Kevin had his resignation. And I just, on behalf of the Board, I don't think anyone's responded. And the way our pre-cooked ones are, I can't respond.
Good. Are we good? Nope. Testing? Testing? Got it? Alright, great.
So we had, we've had three emails since the last meeting. Mostly were caught up on responses, but I think there's one from the Historical Commission that had to do with us being aware of specific sites. And I don't know if that one has been responded to.
Yes. So in terms of Kevin's email, I did respond to that, though I'll have to go back and know if it was just a personal response for me, or maybe nothing officially from the Board, but just an acknowledgement of his resignation. So we can go check on that. And as far as the Historical Commission, yeah, I asked, I sent a question back asking if, if there was a way, if it would be helpful for us to know certain areas where these things might take place, so that we would better know when to ask for more in-depth information.
Yeah, so I can just give a quick update to that. I did reach out to Jim Nielsen of the Historical Commission. The next Wednesday Curtis Hoffman, who's a member of the Historical Commission, is going to come in and show me the material and where it exists in the town vault with the town clerk. And so then, and I'll be, I'll know where it is, I'll take a look at it, and then obviously I can pass that knowledge over to the Planning Board as well.
Great, thank you.
So then we, I just want, keeping up on response, so then, do we, I guess we don't have to give a Board response then to Kevin?
I, I'll look back into that. I think, I think my response probably was fine, but yeah, I'll double-check that. So, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is public comments. Any public comments tonight?
There we go. Good evening, thank you, Mark Sony five, one, almost said my old address, 119 Main Street. I know that on the agenda tonight is the comprehensive planning report. That's on, that's on tonight. But I'm here through the Chairman, to the, to the, and Mr. Peter. We did a great team-up last night, and it was a great meeting, working meeting, and everything was really surprisingly well. If it wasn't race, we came in first. But we also heard the rest of, the rest of the teams talk. But I'm going to toot a horn for both me and Peter. It's like, we knew, we finished our own sentences with ideas. You said at the meeting last night, you took my lead. We led each other to understand where we were going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Alright, seeing no other public comment, we will go to the next item of our agenda, which we have all been looking forward to, the presentation of the Metro West YMCA for Ashland and the surrounding community. Who, Peter is?
Yeah, so I can just introduce Peter and Rick from the, from the Y, from the Metro West YMCA, and I would ask you to come up to the podium, and we can start the presentation. And please introduce yourself, just for the Planning Board's knowledge. Obviously, the Metro West YMCA is a project that's been slated to be, to be here at Ashland for a number of years. I know the community is very excited. And so, having conversations with the leadership of the Metro West YMCA, and knowing where the, where the project is right now, and the development of the project, they asked to come in front of the Planning Board and give a presentation, an update on the project. So, at this point, I think I'll hand it over to both Peter and Rick, and please introduce yourself, and all the members of your team.
And hold, I was going to say, hold on, Peter, just because we're starting to do these on a more regular basis, I think maybe, and I would like the whole team to be introduced, but just for people unfamiliar, I think we should introduce ourselves as a Board. I know most of the people connected, at least here, to the YMCA. My name is Tricia Kendall, and I currently chair the Board.
Catherine Jersey, proud Framingham YMCA member and Board Member.
Excellent, that's great. That's good, that's fine. And just also so you know, we have an associate member who's unable to attend tonight, but she will be watching the tape. And we have an open seat right now, so we're a little short, but we will be filling that seat hopefully sooner rather than, rather than later. So, I will let Rick, in the course of his introduction, introduce the members of his team. Thank you.
Alright, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Really nice to meet some of you and be reintroduced to some others. My name is Rick McPherson, I'm the President/CEO of the Metro West YMCA. I've been in that role for about 12 years now. It's hard to believe. And this idea, this dream of a regional YMCA, serving this part of our service area, has been a priority for the whole 12 years that I've been in this job, and long before that. During the time that I've been in this role, I've worked with, you know, lots of volunteer Y Board members, community leaders, and Y staff members, to really help provide important programs and services for the families in our region, and the impact has been significant, I would say. The impact of the traditional Y facility in Framingham, and the outdoor center in Hopkinton, has had a real impact on the quality of life for the kids, seniors, families. It's really undeniable, for the past 60 years, the impact that the Y has had in this entire Over the last 30 years, I would say, a Y, over the last 30 years, a Y located in Ashland to serve this region has been a longstanding goal of our Board of Directors, community leaders, just, and people just like yourselves. This has been in the works, in conversations, for so long. And so, I'm here tonight to say, you know, so why is everyone investing so much time, working so hard to make this happen? Then I'm going to tee it up to all these great people here that are really going to get into the weeds, but I'd like you to just, you know, take, oh, boy, not moving here. Just not advancing. So it's going to be on this, okay. Alright, so not from here anymore. After that, I'm done, so, I'll have to figure it out when I'm finished. So, I just want you to take a look at the images here for a minute. You know, "The Hoyt Family Y will be an inclusive, diverse, and welcoming force for good that will strengthen the health and well-being of the community by helping people achieve their goals and build relationships while creating a sense of belonging. Every day, this Y will promote healthy living, support youth development, strengthen families, enhance social responsibility. It will foster a sense of belonging by providing a welcoming environment for all people regardless of background or ability." And really, that's why so many people are working so hard to make this happen. And with that, I am going to introduce Peter Weiss-Greber, who's our Chief Development Officer, proud Ashland resident, I might add, and he will take it from here.
Is there something special?
No, he's got to lean into it.
Alright.
It'll be alright.
Thanks, Rick. For the past 30 years, I've worked for YMCA's, and what I've loved doing in my career and in my job is bringing new YMCA's to different communities, whether that be Quincy, or Westboro, or Foxborough. And to have that opportunity to do that in the town that we love, where we live, is really just a dream come true. The fact that the facility is going to be in Ashland means a great deal, and the town of Ashland has been a fantastic partner. But I think it's important to really stress with this group and with folks in the community that this will be a regional facility. This will be serving the surrounding towns as well, even though we know the zip code, and we're very excited about the zip code that we have. So I think you'll see that that regional aspect of this really come to life as you look at the Leadership Cabinet. So, our cabinet co-chaired by Visi Tilak of Ashland, Tom Karen of Framingham, is made up of 20 volunteers from Ashland, Hopkinton, Holliston, Sherburne, and Framingham. And it really is a fantastic group of passionate volunteers. You'll probably recognize a few of the names on there as well, whether it's Yolanda, or Amy, or Steve, or Enzo. Definitely a lot of folks who have done a lot of great things in this town and in the region. They've been working hard over the last 18 months, making connections, building momentum, and really earning the right to make an ask for folks who may want to support this, this project. So we're happy to share, at this point, there we go, that we've secured the first $10 million for this exciting public-private partnership. That funding includes state support, and special thanks to State Senate President Spilka, who's been such a champion for all of, all of Metro West. It also includes a $5 million HUD earmark, and Senator Warren, Senator Markey, Congressman McGovern have been instrumental in, in making that happen. And they're excited to see this all the way through, and I know they'll be there at the ribbon-cutting next to, next to all of us when we get there. I think it's telling that, that our lead gift of $2.5 million came from MathWorks based in Natick, and our most recent seven-figure gift that we were able to secure came from the TGX Foundation based in Framingham. Speaks to that regional nature, but also to the importance of what these companies see as a resource for their employees in this region, many of whom live in town here, and certainly in Hopkinton, Holliston, Ashland, Sherburne, and Framingham, the other towns where our Leadership Cabinet members come from. As we shift our focus to the next $10 million, we've received support already from Needham Bank and Middlesex Bank. We've submitted a number of foundation requests, and from a number of families and individuals in this region, who truly see the impact of what we're going to be able to bring to fruition. So I just, I would close by saying that, having done this now for 30 years in my career, I know how this story can end. This story can end with a ribbon-cutting, with all of us surrounding this building that's going to be a resource for tens of thousands of kids and families for decades to come and generations to come. And I think we see that at our Framingham facility with families who went to the Y, whose kids went to the Y, whose grandkids go to the Y now, and that's what we'll have here, just an amazing resource for, for the project. So, we're on our way to $20 million, and then we'll continue on beyond that. I need to say that fundraising at that level takes a lot of time. It's hard work. I'm saying that because my boss is in the room. But it's exciting work, and we have an opportunity really to leave a legacy. And I think as you see how the project is shaping up now in this next part of the presentation, I think you'll be as excited as, as we are. So, it's my pleasure to call upon and introduce Sekim with CBT Architects, who we're working closely with, and Seki will walk you through the next part of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. It's a great honor to be here, and we're super excited about, obviously, being part of this really amazing opportunity to not only build a beautiful building, but to really be part of this journey of making this community even, even, you know, greater and better, and having this YMCA be part of that endeavor. We are in the process of honing in on what the master planning would, should look like, and we are also in the process of thinking about the design of the building as well. And today, we would like to give an overview of where we are in that process. Not to say that, you know, these are not final, but in terms of the, a lot of the conversations that we've had, and the thoughts that we've been given, we've given to the project, is what we want to share today. We started the project by really thinking about what the guiding principles are, about, you know, what this facility wants to be in Ashland, in Metro West region, and really thinking about aligning that with the community as well as the YMCA. Really prioritizing health and well-being, relationships, and achievement and belonging as the guiding principles, and how that could all lead to really celebrating inclusivity, celebrating, you know, really great, beautiful building that the community can be proud of, but also thinking about how we can integrate nature as part of how we envision the building. And all that leads to a series of aspirations of the qualities that we want to achieve that evolve around the ideas about sustainability, having a unique identity, about building the member experience, as well as the flexibility of spaces, and how the building could evolve over time as the different funding opportunities, and as the community involvement grows, as the members grow, how the building also could grow over time. Through a number of workshops, we've established a number of goals that I outlined here, and you can see that they are not only just focused on members and programming, but a lot of it is related to sustainability, about the visibility, identity, as well as community building. We see nature as a really big driver, and something that makes this YMCA very different from a lot of the other YMCA's. Knowing where the site is, and knowing the really robust nature and the environment that the building is going to be sitting, sitting within, really celebrating nature and integrating nature as part of the experience is something that we're really prioritizing. The other thing that we're really thinking about a lot is the connection. The connection between the programs within the building, but also connection from inside to the outside, and outside and in. So as we're looking at the overall master plan on screen, you can begin to imagine all the different kind of an outdoor activity that we're envisioning as part of this overall plan, while also thinking about all the pragmatics of thinking about the parking, and what that experience is going to be, the peak hours, and as well as what the experience is going to be when you enter the building and when you're looking out. To give you a little bit of overview about the thought process that we've gone through for this master planning exercise, one thing that we wanted to show here is the fact that along Memorial Drive, the grade is higher, and then towards the north, which on screen is towards the right, lower right, that's the north, the slope, the ground slopes down. And what that began to sort of give us, suggest us, is the potentially being able to place the building in a location that would allow the building to have this really amazing northern view towards the nature, which would align with how we think about the daylighting, the building, in such a way that it wouldn't require necessarily extra solar protection on the exterior, as well as reducing the operation cost, obviously, because we'll be naturally daylighting a lot of the building from sort of the diffused northern light. What this development spine that's indicated in the arrow also calls out is the fact that we are able to put a lot of the logistics in the parking on one side of the plot, and then allow the northern side of the plot to be fully sort of this nature, beautiful nature, that I think is very special about the site. Along the, along the route of thinking about the sustainability and passive strategies that we want to incorporate, we were looking at a lot of different sort of massing schemes, and one thing that we sort of agreed to from very beginning is how we can reduce the embodied carbon of the building. And one very simple way to do that is by reducing the footprint, and also by reducing the envelope of the building, which is where a lot of the embodied carbon is. So when you begin to look at the comparison of, let's say, a building that has a lot of ins and outs, like the footprint that you see on the right, compared to something that is a little bit more orthogonal and simple as a rectangular box in the middle, we can begin to understand that there is already in an envelope, that there's a 20% reduction in the envelope, which we thought was a very simple but smart strategy in terms of how we can keep the embodied carbon down. Obviously, if we build a perfectly circle footprint, we will have a 38% reduction in envelope, but obviously, given the programmatic requirement of the gym facilities and other, you know, yoga studios and other program and pools, a circular geometry would basically yield in a lot of inefficiencies, which is why we sort of agree that something that is compact, as seen in the middle, sort of a gnoli, plan is something that we were committed to from very early on. And how we're placing that building on the side so that it overlooks the landscape, and how the building can also act as sort of that division between the parking and the nature, is something that we discussed a lot about, and strategically decided that that would be a really great location to place a building. Along the same lines of thinking about sustainability, I mentioned about the compactness of the building, and obviously, the higher you build, the more compact the footprint will be, and hence less foundation. So, although we see a lot of YMCA's that are spread across two floors, we really, really made the effort with our collaborator Grow to kind of see how the three-story configuration could work. And in our, the sectional diagram you see here, we came up with a section where you can enter the building at a mid-level. So although the building is three-story and compact, the experience of how you get to your different program within is just that you either go one story up or one story down. So that is sort of another way that we were able to think about reducing the impact on the site. As we're thinking about where this building is located, and what it means to be in Ashland in Metro West, you know, we were doing a lot of research about a lot of the different historic examples of historic buildings that have been built in, in Ashland. And as you can see in this array of examples, there is no sort of a one style, or one aesthetic that would sort of define Ashland. But at the same time, we've done a lot of buildings in these sort of very significant and historic neighborhoods, both in an urban and suburban setting. And from our experience, the most successful buildings have always been the buildings that actually reflect the period in which it was built, rather than trying to mimic or copy some sort of a styles from decades ago. And we think that there are ways to really bring in some of the narrative from the site and from Ashland, or perhaps a greater New England, as we are thinking about some of the narratives such as glacial erodics or boulders. And this is, you know, a map of named glacial erodics across North America. Just the orientation, you see a lot of Canada up north, and you see the Five Great Lakes. And you can see where all the black dots are, that's where named glacial erodics are across North America. And you can see that in the New England region, there's a high concentration of named glacial erodics that, you know, look something like this. And we see a lot of these boulders on our site as well, and we are finding ways to how that could also be a way in which we can kind of build a narrative around what the building wants to be. I mean, rather than, let's say, necessarily thinking about what the historic Ashland buildings are doing, can we think about the essence of what these boulders are doing, and allow some of the materiality to manifest more of that solid, massive spirit? And therefore, the material that we're thinking about, one of the materials that we're thinking about, is whether it could be some sort of a masonry material at the base of the building, or at a good portion of the building, that sort of resembles, or that is kind of inspired by solidity that we see in a lot of the glacial erodics that we find in New England area. As we're thinking about materiality, materiality of the building, we're also thinking about embodied carbon, but also durability, as well as cost. So when we begin to balance all of these things, we are also thinking that it could be, a portion of the building could be aluminum panel of some sort, because we thought that it could also be a good sort of a complement, complementary material to masonry material. As we're thinking about the phasing, as I mentioned earlier, we think that that development spine that I had shown earlier in one of the earlier slides, it could be a really nice way to not only think about how we can take advantage of the site, and allow the building to really leverage the passive, the northern light and all of that, but it could also be a way to think about the future phases of the building. So by establishing that spine that goes east to west, we can really guarantee that the future phases that grow in the east and the west direction, that they're all going to continue to have the view to the nature, view to the north, and all are going to continue to really take advantage of the diffused northern lights that we think is going to be a really great, amazing experience for the building. This is a snippet of where we are in, I would say, a design process, and by no means this is like a final, but a glimpse of how we're thinking about, you know, how those two materials can really begin to shape the building, and how we can begin to really think about framing those northern views as such. And then the ELC component that is over to the west of the site, how that can also play up a role in kind of being part of this overall organization of the massings in the buildings in such a way that it doesn't feel like it is sort of this isolated, separate one, but it is all part of this sort of a larger master plan is really what the aim is here. This is a view from the north, so as mentioned earlier, really taking advantage of the northern view and diffuse light is something that we really want to celebrate here. That's correct. And also, thinking about the idea of sustainability, we know that the idea of circularity is something that we also want to consider. And as we are, as we walked the site, we obviously found a lot of trees there, but we also found a lot of boulders. So as we are continuing to develop and finesse the design, we're really researching into how we can actually keep a lot of the materials from the site onto the site, by thinking about how to use the wood that we are going to cut down, and how to keep that inside the building as potentially interior finishes. And as mentioned earlier, how some of these boulders that we find on site, how we can also reuse them as potential site elements, is something that we are actively looking into. That is sort of where we are in the process, and I would turn it to Enzo.
Good evening, my name is Enzo Scolora, Scolora Consulting Group here in Ashland. We are the owners' representatives for the project, and I get to talk to you tonight about, a little bit about the schedule and trying to keep this job on schedule. So as Seki and the rest of the team said, one of the main objectives was to really start this project with a very comprehensive master plan that they can grow into, that the YMCA can grow into. And we're continuing to And we're continuing to massage that, but as we massage those components, one of the things we were au- authorized to do was to release parts of it into design. So we're actually in design development right now, uh, on certain aspects of the project. Next week, we'll be meeting with the town departments. Uh, Peter did a great job setting us, setting a meeting up for next week so that we can start collaborating on some of the technical aspects. As we look forward, we, we expect that sometime in March, we'll be ready to submit for a comprehensive site plan application. Um, we're evaluating variance potential, uh, if we need a variance, we'll go through the ZBA, of course. We expect to start that prior to the site plan application, give that some momentum. And we're thinking about submitting conservation commission at the same time of the site plan application for, for approvals. And again, looking forward post that, uh, as far as our timeline, there's a critical board meeting at the end of June, which authorizes the project to move into construction documents, eventually bid the project to construction managers and obviously prep us for construction in the future. So we're assuming a three-month timeline from March through June, essentially sometime March through June, in terms of conservation commission, maybe four months for ZBA if need be, or three months, and then, um, site plan approval process. So those are some of the assumptions we're making as we're moving forward into what is hopefully a grand opening sometime in 2027. I think that wraps itself for questions and answers.
Well, from, it depends on if what they're set, if they're, from a variance standpoint, yeah, I haven't looked at it and I don't think we've discussed it from a full point, but from a setbacks issue, if there's a variance that needs to be obtained, then it would go to the zoning board first. But no, this project is full planning board, site plan approval process. Uh, whatever special permits need be, obviously, I haven't discussed that, you know, with the applicant at this time, but, um, maybe more conversations are needed just as their development continues on the site. But, uh, if need be, obviously, yes, you would organize that, that variance in or special permit that would need to be issued from the zoning board prior to any planning board application.
Do you know if there's a, I, I didn't know if that was just, um, something you misspoke, or do you think there's a, there's going to be a, an issue to go before the zoning board of appeals?
We're evaluating everything right now, as Peter said, we're just trying to determine our final plan and just trying to give you a set, sense of how we're thinking about the project as we move forward. Next week, I think will be the most telling coming out of that meeting with some of the technical discussions.
So when you were talking about the, the March, was that, um, was that some, a submission to the planning board or submission to the zoning board of appeals?
That was a submission to the planning board in March, yes, probably midway, third week of March is what we're thinking.
All right, not gonna hold you to it, I was just kinda wondering where we are in line. Okay. Well, I think, I, I think just, uh, that what we're intending today, um, for the board is just to have this kind of informal discussion to get to know the project better, get to know the players better, um, cause obviously it's a complex project and the earlier we start understanding, um, you know, how things are coming together and what the concerns of the board might be representing as representing the town. So I think it's a fairly informal that way, but I will first, of course, open it up to the board.
So I, I have a question as related to, it's the why with comprehensive plan. So we, we were right in, Mark spoke about that at the beginning of the meeting, right? Kind of in the thick of strategies. And one of them is support the regional Metro West YMCA expansion on Memorial Drive by expediting permitting pathways, consolidating permitting reviews and creating a clear process to streamline the permitting process. So do you know anything about that? Like what, what would you be asking for?
We would, you wanna field that, Steve?
Okay, cause it, it struck me as odd because that there must be something we need, and this would probably be the time to get it out there if, if we're something we're supposed to look at, and otherwise, um, I have two hats here. One is on the comprehensive plan, we can say maybe we don't need that and cross it off, or flesh out whatever things we were talking about.
I think the conversation we're having tonight is obviously helps meet that goal, right? Sometimes the comprehensive plans, the goals don't always meet exactly up, right? The comprehensive plan is ongoing, that's a goal of it or a draft goal, but I think we're trying to at least have the, we're having these conversations now, right? To try to flesh out ideas and just to understand each other. And I think that this conversation tonight kinda helps meet that goal. Now, if it's a meeting that needs to be put together with the conservation commission and the planning board, just so all both the boards are on the same page as this project takes, takes shape, I think that's something that could be done and organized that would help meet that goal of the comprehensive plan. And I think that's just an example of, of how the town and the applicant could work together, obviously, and to, to meet that goal of the comprehensive.
Well, I think, I mean, at that timeline, we won't be done with the comprehensive plan, so, so we can, we can scratch that.
Yeah, and, and, and look, timing, you, you, you know, you never hit, you're not gonna hit everything, right? Nothing, nothing's gonna obviously dovetail like you want it, but I think it's a matter of, you know, working through all processes and, and juggling all, juggling all items.
So was Kate, was this something that came up that it's kinda being discussed as part of the comprehensive plan, but obviously the comprehensive plan isn't official or anything yet, so you're wondering if this was requested or, um, if it's just come out of, um, a, a lot of residents maybe concerns that things don't get held up in our process?
I don't need to find the background, I just need to find what it means, like, and if, if people are, report back, they're in front of us saying March of this year, it does not need to be in the comprehensive plan. So I have one answer.
Okay.
And I think I have two answers that the Y doesn't really know too much about it, so we're fine, just keep moving.
Okay.
That's, did I get that right, I think? That's. I mean, the public definitely is, and it did come up last night at our comprehensive plan, so, cool.
Okay.
Um, can I just say one other thing? I think, um, the respect for the environment, I, I, I mean, I, I'm not, I say this before, I'm an adult who wants scare animals for matching, so I'm, the actual materials you picked and how, I, I, I don't know that I can comment, but I can see the planning and the thought behind that, and I appreciate that.
Um, Peter, is this, um, is this, is this site in the rail transit district?
Yes.
That the zoning, and the zoning is, um, what will this fall under in that zone? Commercial?
Let me, can we come back to that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and also with the, is the, um, is the project gonna require a site, um, site alteration special permit as well? I assume yes.
I assume yes, with the, the amount of grading, I've walked that site, you know, it, it's gonna take a lot of earthwork.
Okay.
So yeah, that's gonna be kind of within that process.
So site plan review, site alteration special permit, are we looking at any other? I mean, we're, we're early in the process, but I was just wondering from the committee, like, do, uh, right, conservation, but also special permits, are, are there any special, anticipated special permits or waivers from the planning board that you'd be looking for? I don't know how far.
I, I'm gonna, I'm sorry to cut you off, Enzo. Uh, I just got a text, somebody watching at home, um, it's great that we're all, obviously having this conversation, but when you do speak, you're gonna have to come up to the microphone and speak into the microphone, just so the folks at home, uh, can obviously hear us, so.
And I am happy people are watching at home, so we apologize for that.
So thank you, so I, I, I apologize to cut anybody off, but I just wanna make sure everyone at home can hear, uh, in, in appropriate manner.
We will be more careful about that.
As Peter said, and, and we're, this is more of a community affairs event where we're, can you hear, it looks on, yeah. Where we're just presenting and giving you a sense of where around the project, we're evaluating all the permitting, we're evaluating with our internal groups and with Peter and your teams, in terms of, we might need a height variance is one thing, okay? So we're evaluating that, if we can lower that, obviously we won't go for a, for a variance, but that's part of the massaging of the building that we're working through right now. So that's one thing. We're trying to keep parking, uh, to only what's needed, but think about the growth of the property, right? So don't have to come back and scramble and add more parking, right? So we're trying to keep that parking count under 300. So those are two things that we're, we're massaging right now in preparation for deciding how the final plan is gonna look before we present it to you.
Are you saying you're hoping to keep the parking less than what's required? Is, is that what, is that what you're saying? Or ask, might you be asking for more than what's allowed?
We're evaluating exactly what is allowed.
Okay.
There's a gray area there from what our current evaluation, but overall, even if we were to exceed that, we would still stay under 300 because 300 trips some other, some other regulations.
And in a, in a way, I'm asking, um, it, someone related to what Kate was talking about, like if we know what's coming as far as the, there's the site plan, of course, there's the site plan review, but there's all these nuances with special permits and, and things like that, so if we, if we know it's kind of coming, knowing that you don't know all those answers right now, those are problems we can, we can talk about in advance if they're, if they're, if they're problems for the planning board or if they're not, or how do, how do we address those versus having to try to tackle them on the spot when the project is further developed, so, um, earlier the better.
So when we meet with the town departments next week and Peter's team, our consultants will be present, our evaluation's gonna take it to another level and we're gonna talk about some of those technical, technicalities so that we come with a more solidified plan of all the permits that we need.
Okay.
But we, again, we are trying to massage things to limit the amount of permits, to stay within the guidelines and so forth and so, so on.
Right.
We're just not there yet.
Right, yeah, best to stay within the roles when you can, but it doesn't always work.
Right.
Got it?
That answer the question?
Yes.
I guess this is more on our side, but to be prepared and presumably, we've known about this for a while, but maybe we didn't know when it was coming, like the whole water sewer, cause that's a, that's a big, it's a big place. And, um, I know we often are at sort of near the limits of the capacity of those, so has anyone looked into that or, cause I think, I think we're gonna wanna know that, right? One way or another.
Yeah, I think when we move forward with this project, I think that's one of the major steps will be questioned. Obviously, our peer review consultants, uh, our peer review, I mean, excuse me, our water and sewer consultants who have been working with this town for years, you know, they do have a very good grasp and, and, and if, if that is a concern of the planning board, I, I'm sure I can bring it up next Wednesday to make sure that the YMCA obviously fully understands the concern of the town from a capacity standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a good point to have it on that technical kind of agenda right from the start, cause it keeps coming up with every large building that we do. And, um, obviously this is a little different residence versus this, this type of building, but it'd be better to adjust it from, from day one, um, and have the town involved in that. Deepa, Anna?
Um, I, obviously very, very helpful presentation, and I also found it to be thoughtful and strategic, um, as far as the, the detail and the thought of looking at Ashland's historic buildings, thinking about the natural elements of the landscape, the regional elements. I thought that was one of the more, um, strategic and thoughtful presentations I've seen in a while, so I, I appreciate that. My thoughts, I had five kind of points to think about that would be helpful to hear next time when this is presented in March. One has to do with transportation, obviously outside of parking, uh, whether there could be a bus stop, um, part of the comprehensive plan discussions is to allow for more, um, robust, uh, alternative pathways to get to places. This isn't too far from our public schools, uh, will there be a way, obviously a bus stop, uh, bike lane, bike lanes or, or ways to leave your bike, maybe electric charging stations for cars, things that make this very modern, very future, where people can walk, bike, get to it in ways other than a car. So that would be really delightful to see as part of the project, that we can see not just the building design, but the landscaping and the thought of how to integrate this with our community. And I would encourage the future applicant to, to speak to our bike trail committee folks who've been involved in various, uh, efforts to create a bike path through Ashland and whether there's a way to integrate this project into some of those plans. So that's one, transportation, alternatives other than cars.
Can we actually pause there? Is, is there someone who can maybe talk about that, about how the building, you, and how it's fitting into its site and all the things around there that it might connect to, uh, the trolley boat trails?
Do you want me to tell us the rest, or you wanna?
I was just wondering if there's, um...
Yeah, it's fine, we can stop here.
Yeah, if, 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 if it's ready to be talked about at that point, like how the building relates to this particular site?
Go back to, um, I don't know whether we're gonna be able to zoom in. So when we're looking at the master plan over here, one thing that we're really trying to do is to have an impact beyond the site. So one thing that we're really thinking about is this outdoor trail, um, that we are, um, carving out, um, in I would say what seems to be sort of a purple, light purple, um, sort of a trail and connecting to the Charlie Trail, um, so that, you know, people, it's not just about using the facility, but and then people can come and actually enjoy the nature and be part of the greater, um, network. We also acknowledge that, you know, there is a, a West Union, um, street, uh, which is a very significant, important road, um, especially, you know, with the Boston Marathon and just thinking about the proximity to that. And we're thinking about whether there are ways to, you know, create a more of a, a sort of a visual connection, um, from where that is. In terms of just thinking about, I think of the bike lane, um, I think that is a conversation that we would like to have, uh, with you guys, you know, as the project goes on. There are EV, uh, charging, um, I wouldn't say stations, but we, we are designing the building in such a way that we can have, um, the EV charging, um, I forget exactly what the amount is, but, um, a, a good amount of the parking spot will be EV charging ready so that when the future, when there are hopefully, you know, more electric cars, more, you know, sustainable means of transportation, that there's an infrastructure that, that's already in place to allow for those connections to happen. Does that, does that sort of a, answer your question?
Yeah, I think, um, you know, we know on, where's the dog park located relative to the, is it up toward the T station or below the T station?
It's kinda like where that sledding hill would be, you know, it's gonna be in that area.
So is it the next, so is it the very next?
Charlie River Trails are right around here.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Right, I remember that. Yeah, so I think, I mean, what would be, and I know when you get that far, we'll have this, but showing how the Y connects in with, um, the, the bigger picture of the things around it, you know, how it connects to the trail, how it connects to the dog park, I mean, even the Dunkin' Donuts, right? I mean, it's a, it's a community spot, right? So to, to see how this, um, you know, there's the memorial park kind of right across the street, the, the school is there, so this is really a, a center, you know, a mini-center in Ashland that almost everyone is familiar with and uses at some point. So to see this building kind of land in the middle of all this activity and understand since it is meant to be so connected to the committee or to the community, whether that's by dogs or by coffee, you know, to see how, see how it's really connecting into the, those things would be great, even if it's just a sidewalk, but to show it in, in its kind of environment. Sorry to throw, but without, we, maybe if we adjust, if we go along.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
Next. Um, my other comments were, um, to get a little bit more detail, obviously on the landscape elements, which I think this is hinting at it somewhat, but, um, the mention, obviously the presentation has focused quite a bit on the building reflecting and honoring the outside, the sun, the nature, the green, um, but maybe getting a little bit more detail as to what the landscaping plan... But maybe getting a little bit more detail as to what the landscaping plan is. So that was one comment. I mean, this hints, hints at it, but with a lot more detail would be helpful. What trees are kept, what things will be planted, what the, what the outside area will look like. And then I had questions or thoughts about, you know, the sustainability of the building itself, whether there'll be any certification relative to the, how the building is built. And then solar ready or actual solar? As far as energy, that was more of a question.
I think we're targeting, I guess to go backwards, in terms of solar, we're targeting solar ready. But and then we are in conversation with the PV select energy in terms of where that could happen. And we are designing the building in such a way, in fingers crossed, in hopes that we wouldn't have to necessarily install these huge structures in the parking lot, but and then allow the roof of the, the building to have enough space to allow these PV panels to take, take place. So as we're thinking about the HVC and mechanical equipment and what goes on the roof, we are really trying to consolidate them and leave ample room for PVs to take place in the future. And obviously, the infrastructure of the building and how it, it obviously will be designed in such a way that when that time comes, when it does happen, that it, it's easily, you know, you can just connect to it as opposed to having to, you know.
Sure, or, or any kind of contemporary, kind of modern, green design on the, on that roof, whatever that might be. Green, green, solar, anything that's modern and futuristic. I think this is an opportunity that the applicant's team seems to be looking to. So those were some of my questions.
We actually have, if you don't have it already, we have a sustainability, what we call a sustainability best practices list that was created. Do you, do you have that list? Yeah, and I'm sure it's not from your point of view, I'm sure it's not comprehensive. I'm sure with your team that you're very familiar with all these issues. But it kind of brings up things that we've talked about as the committee, committees in Ashland and would be obviously always looking for your input as well, based on experience that you have in other projects and ideas that might work here.
Yeah, we love that and we, we have the checklist and we've sort of gone through them and began to compare it with, you know, our current approach and the direction we are headed in terms of where the alignments are, where we're exceeding, where we're falling short. And so we are actively sort of checking against of what. And it's great to see that, you know, town of Ashland is so big on sustainability. And obviously, us as a, as a team and also as a, as a design firm, we're also, sustainability is something they really want to promote. So we're actively always just cross-checking, but also thinking about the different ways. Like example, with the circularity, for example, is something that, you know, it's not required, obviously. But it, it's just felt like it's the best thing to do. It's, it's what's right to do, especially given how much, you know, wood is on the site, how much, you know, material is on the site. And trying to find ways to keep those on the site is something that.
I, I feel like when I first saw the initial iteration of the project years ago now, that it was more at an angle, a right angle to Memorial Drive. And so it's really kind of realigned itself. So the, so the street really runs very north-south as the Memorial Drive, is that east-west? It aligns east-west, so the building.
Yeah, this site plan is almost true north, almost.
Wow, okay.
Yeah. And, you know, it was interesting find when we were walking the site that, because initially, we were kind of very skeptical of having a, a big parking lot along Memorial Drive in terms of like that identity from community. But when we were walking the site, we saw that there's a berm along Memorial Drive, that there's a, there's a berm and vegetation. And we thought that, that is a nice way to screen the parking lot and create this sort of a discovery approach moment to people who are turning from the Memorial Drive, that it's not the parking lot that they see. But you go through this trail of woods and then you see the building and the landscape beyond, and then you see the parking lot. And, and that was sort of the aha moment for us to be able to kind of say, actually, maybe it's, it's good to have the parking lot close to the Memorial Drive and allow the nature, the berm, to play the screen role and allow us to try to preserve as much of the nature and the view to the north as possible.
So the building really becomes kind of this threshold between the busy street and the parking and the nature beyond. Yeah, I mean, I think the, I think the, you know, the shape of it, that this very simple bar can sometimes be intimidating maybe to people looking at it, that it's just a box, right? How hard is that? But in school myself, in design school, you know, you, you really talk about the beautiful box. Like how do you create the beautiful box? Which is, which is really when you look at these historic examples that you have been looking at around Ashland. A lot of them are that, a lot of them are a box footprint that, that then use other means to express themselves. And that, that's not an easy task. I think sometimes it's easier making kind of these crazy shapes and that's, that's the prettiness of the building. So, but I'm, I'm really interested in this approach that says, hey, we really have to look at sustainability. We have this opportunity for a perfect north-south alignment. What can we do with it? How can we use it in many different, in many different contexts, right? And then, you know, then the question becomes, how do you create the beautiful box? Which, you know, I agree with you about not, I, I think often when you try to replicate something that's noteworthy in the town, it, it really often goes awry. And I think it's about showing respect for those things, having a nod to those things, but not duplicating those things. So I'm, would look forward to, to seeing that, you know, design process as it, as it moves forward.
Not, not at this time, go ahead.
I don't have anything additional to add from what I've heard, but I think, thank you for really taking the time to go through detail the evolution of the design so far. I think that's really helpful. What I would add is as you're developing, you are in schematics, but as you're developing, especially the experience as you drive through the Memorial Drive and that connection with the berm and the building beyond, I think as you're developing these views, that particular moment is, needs to be part of your journey. Because if you look at just this, the south of this building, it's got a lot of opaque surfaces. You're connecting to the north with a lot of the transparency, which I think I appreciate. I see a glass connection that you have from the Memorial Drive to the north. But I think that need, that language needs to kind of continue a little longer on the south side of it because it's completely, at least from these views right now, it's opaque box. So it's a going to be a, it feels a little too modern for Ashland design, I think. So I, connecting to that nature and that drive that you just explained, I think that's really important to experience that beyond putting a very modern architectural element in Ashland, which is not something that, like from your images, that you already know that you're not going to see that very often. So I think that connection is great on a 2D or a plant, site plan view, but I think it needs to come a little more on your 3D, three-dimensional and that experience that actually you would see in a building that you have here. So especially for the scale of it. It's three-storied, yes, one story is below the street level. But again, I think it's going to be, the materiality also, you've, I think you're not, it's a great story about the glacier stones and things like that. But I think the materiality needs to connect a little more to the Ashland design language. It's a little off right now. It needs to scale down and kind of connect back to the history of Ashland and Ashland materiality. So as you're developing this, I would really pay attention to the materials palette as you're progressing. You're way early on the, this one, but.
Yeah. Can you elaborate a little bit more?
So I, I don't see any of, like you had in your slides, you had brick and the stone and the concrete and you had aluminum panel. But on your elevations, it's much more modern material, right? It's more, you have a little more modern material that's showing on your elevations.
They, these, these are envisioned as aluminum and, and the, the base of that, that gray base that you see would be sort of the masonry unit.
Okay.
The, the finish and the color that we would select and the, and the coursing that we would design, we would think about, you know, that transparency and allowing light to come through. But the materiality is the aluminum, glass and masonry. It's just the nature of the finish, you know, how much sheen are we thinking about in terms of, you know, can the metal panel reflect the changing season around the building in such a way that when it's fall season, you see a glimpse of the red, you know, through the metal panel? Can the CMU or brick have a, have a also a level of sheen or a different sort of a coloration or pigment?
Yeah.
That doesn't necessarily try to be like the historic brick, but and then have, you know, take a life of a more, more a modern, future-focused life, that people see it and they know that, yes, you know, that seems familiar, but at the same time, that's very different, right? So that, that's sort of like what we're trying to capture. Maybe it's not completely captured in this current iteration, but definitely something that we're going to continue to revisit.
Absolutely, that's exactly what I'm saying. I think you have that right concept there, but I think as you're developing that, those, those elements need to show off.
Definitely.
Otherwise, it feels like a really cold aluminum box.
Definitely.
I'm assuming it's one of the Alucobond panels or things like that, right, that you're planning to use?
We're trying to stay away from composite aluminum panels because of it's unsustainable and.
Perfect.
Nature, so it's probably likely going to be more of like sheet metal or brick metal.
Perfect.
But the finish will be that, it's similar.
All the more reason why the other materiality needs to start to kind of connect. So that especially with, when you're driving through that Memorial Drive, that nature and kind of that, because there's a lot more happening on the other side of the building, which you're, it's not public facing. It's more when you really walk into that facility, that's when you're going to connect to that. So I think it's really important to bring that as you're developing.
Definitely.
You're, it's way early to talk about it, but just be mindful.
I think it's, it's really good to bring up though, because I think, you know, and if I'm hearing you correctly, it's like we're liking all the things that are being said, but don't necessarily really like the look of the building yet, you know? And that is because it's very early, right? It's, it's not, you know, the amount of energy that, we don't even know exactly what the outside is like because the inside hasn't been fully formed yet and where all the program goes. So it's about emphasizing that we're looking for something there and we know it's not there yet. So we're going to reserve judgment, like on that part, obviously.
But I think, I think this is exactly why we are here, right? Just to get some feedback and to know exactly, you know, what you guys are looking for and to hear from you so that we can go back to the drawing board and kind of see how we can also, you know, really absorb that. And then, you know, as we iterate and develop further, be able to really reflect on that.
I think one of the things that older buildings have, which may, we may have just given them artificially over time, but they have a certain kind of, no matter what their material is, if it's, even if it's something cold like stone, but it has some kind of, you know, conceptual warmth to it. And I think that's maybe what isn't, isn't present yet in the drawings, is the kind of, that warmth and welcoming while being a modern building, you know?
For sure.
Yeah, I, I think it was more important, especially when you both brought up the context, right? When we start to zoom out a little bit and start to look at it, the reference of what's going on on the right side. I mean, not compared with Dunkin' Donuts, but at least your Dog Park and all the Charles Trail and things like that. When you start to connect with that larger scale, this building will have to start showing that materiality in a very different palette. That's what I was getting at.
So can I jump into this as a non-designer? Non-architect, non-designer voice. And I, I very much appreciate the conversation and I, I think it's okay for us to kind of state an opinion. I, I'm very excited about the mo- modern element of this. I, I think the, the pieces that speak to me quite a bit visually is the ELC view, I think that's what it's called, yeah. The building in the back, the, the smaller section right there, has that almost reflective of the sky and the green. There's so much glass there that you can imagine it's going to reflect whatever's happening in nature and it's going to almost match the skyline in a really beautiful way, whether it's stormy outside, rainy or a beautiful sunny day. I personally think the, the darker building that's closer feels more urban, too, almost too urban for Ashland. And so for me, that contrast was a little bit painful to my eye. Not, I'm not a designer, I'm not an architect. I'm just sharing a view that I personally would love to see more of that reflective sky feel in that closer building. And I do like the element of art, although again, this felt more urban rather than Ashland-esque. And I do wonder if that mural or art or whatever you're imagining there can more closely reflect that history that we have here, whether it's a history that somehow hints at the Boston Marathon or hints at our historic buildings or hints at our Native American history, our, there, there's so much here that we can play off of to make those ar- artistic elements a little bit closer to our history. But that's, those are my more kind of subjective reflection. I, I love the modernity and I would not want to make that go away. But I, I, I'm leaning more towards the back building than the darker front.
No, I think that's a great point. The mural piece is something that we've been talking for a while and, you know, it's a question of whether we allow the mural to be part of the ELC and of the Y programming, meaning that seasonally can the kids participate in the murals? Or does it become more of a permanent piece, as you mentioned? And in that, in the latter case, obviously, you know, we would, you know, engage in a much more deeper conversation with you guys in terms of what would be sort of that fit, the good fit. But it's definitely something that we're, you know, talking about. And in regards to the glass, I, I, I do agree and I love, you know, when, when the glass or materials are able to reflect some of the surrounding. Going back to our firm's sort of commitment, our firm's commitment to sustainability, glass, the more glass a building has, the higher the embodied carbon usually is. And also in terms of the operational and the heat loss, there, there's a huge sort of upside of what a glass building means. So more and more, we as professionals are trying to stay away from building these beautiful glass boxes just because of its implication on, 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 on the planet. And hence, in the, in a lot of the projects that we're working on currently, there is a, a huge amount of effort in really thinking about where we place the windows strategically so that we can reduce the embodied carbon as much as possible without compromising the daylighting and the views. So it's something that we're balancing, but it's always a balance, right? Because if we just always focus on the nature and the sustainability embodied carbon, then, you know, we'll build a solid box and, you know, with LED lights and, you know, and make a refrigerator and then it'll be, you know, we'll call it a day. But so it, it's a balance of that, but definitely a good point. And in this, our current iteration, it really focuses on trying to put as much of the glass on the northern side because we know that we are going to be able to get that really nice filter light and the view. But and then while acknowledging definitely your point about, we are going to need some windows and, you know, that level of transparency so that as people are driving by or parking and arriving, that it doesn't feel like, you know, a solid box. So it's something that we are, that we will sort of, you know, wrestle around with in the next coming months.
An opportunity to make it dynamic. The mural, like you said, it could be something more dynamic and nothing constant. And that itself is a moment by, you know, I think something that you can, but that experience is going to be, once you come into the driveway near the parking lot. So the scale of this is very different when you are actually in that environment versus driving by that. So I think there's challenge you have on both ways, so.
That's right.
I was going to say, I'll also open it up if there's any questions or comments, or public comment, people that aren't on the team that want to comment, you can be, feel welcome to come up as well. I don't know if we have too many people on the Zoom, but that they should raise their hand if, if they have a comment. Anyone out there on the Zoom?
Yeah, I can just mention, if anybody online wants to make a comment, please raise your hand and I'll ask you to, I'll, I'll call on you as I normally do.
And then my, oh, did you see anybody?
Nope.
Okay, my, my question would then also be for the team, if there, if there's anything. And it also goes to like expediting the process, having a smooth. And it also goes to like expediting the process, having a smooth process. If there's any questions that the project team has for the board, that you should make sure that line of communication is open to as far as what, you know, what you're looking for from us or the type of input in order to help your process go more smoothly. That would be very helpful for us as well.
One of the things that we've had a lot of success with when on projects is one, ensuring we give you a comprehensive application, right? With as little potential for gaps as possible. That's one of our objectives. When we do that effectively on projects, it makes your life easier, right? The second thing is opening up the conversations with your peer reviewer to make sure there's a dialogue back and forth so that when you receive information, it's also accurate for information coming back from them. I think those two things done well, we can help that process along. Now after, as I said before, after next week's meeting, we'll have a better picture of locking down some of these things in preparation for, you know, talking about the technical aspects. And I think that meeting will lead into some more of the specific questions that might come about.
Yeah, I think for us, obviously, there's the list of requirements for the application. And I'm, I have to go back and actually see what's on there, but like seeing the project. We're always looking to see the project, like I said, in its greater context. And I think because a lot of our bylaws talk about that, like how does the building fit into its context? Not necessarily does it look like this building next door, but how are they connected? How do they talk to each other? How do they become good neighbors?
You wanna zoom out a little bit more.
Yeah, zoom out a little bit more. And then as the landscape does start to get developed and the building starts to get developed in its facade, just to be able to see, to be able to see that from different angles. Obviously, those are usually provided, but to show them in its context with other buildings, if they're there, would be helpful as well so that not only us, but the public can really visualize how it sits on Memorial Drive.
Great. Anything else from anybody on our side?
Enzo had mentioned a March application and our board meeting is June. It's a really important board meeting. Is that timing work? Is that realistic?
You mean to, was the timing to start in March and finish in June?
Yes.
Is that?
That was essentially the timing, correct. In similar processes, similar communities, you know, that's in our opinion a fair process. Again, we still have to work with you to figure out the final permit applications. If there's anything, if we need a variance, walk through that process, but yeah, that's kind of the intent.
Yeah, I'm gonna say that historically, our board tends to take more time. That said, I think that's just a, that's just part of the records as to how long projects take coming through the planning board. That said, I don't think we want it to be that way. I think we're looking for a smoother, more efficient process, so we're happy to work with you on that. And it may even be that if you reach another milestone before March, I don't think there's anything that prevents us from having a second informal meeting to kind of check in in order to keep, to keep that project more on track.
Yeah, I think obviously tonight's the start of the conversation, the start of a conversation that has been going on, obviously, on your side. So I think Trish is correct, you know, if there's another milestone, let's come in, bring it back and let's talk about it. You know, let's not just say, okay, we'll come back and march and we'll just hit the ground running after the public hearing, but after the advertisement of the public hearing notice. Right? I think the lines of communication have been opened and you can kind of move forward. And I would say to this, obviously, we have professional peer reviewers that work on big projects in the town of Ashland. And I, from my standpoint is that the, as your professional team, right, can engage with our professional engineers and go back and forth, it moves very, it can move quickly. Where there's a lag time and where things get mixed up is that if the response is, if one party is dragging their feet on the other side. You know, and I think it's our job, my job to make sure as the town's peer reviewer is not dragging their feet, right? And is getting, is being timely in a responsible manner. But also if you guys aren't submitting data, revised plans, if it's going weeks on end, then you can't really look to the planning board to say, hey, we missed this deadline.
Noted.
You know, I think that's where, that's where the rubber hits the road in my eyes.
We do have, we've done quite a bit of work. I think we have a checklist that Kate had put together for projects that we could adopt for this.
Well, and I think we should, and I do, I do wanna, it's kind of what Peter was saying, but I support your saying our board takes time because we are thoughtful, but the time that I've seen, we are often blamed for a long queue that comes from the other side. And I'm confident, I mean, it often starts with the packet, because I've spent, if we don't get a complete packet, right? It might be complete enough to get your application in, but then it's not really, right? You know, it's not really to the level that we can comment on. If you, right, so I think working together, but I'm just gonna speak up for our board that I do not think it's us causing delays to things. It's usually been not ready, need more time. I think Peter, I have not seen from our consultants, I've seen them be extremely responsive, but Peter committed to if it is on our end.
No, our consultants are always very committed, you know, and I'm dealing with, I'm on a very big project that, right now. And things roll and you gotta be kind of proactive and get ahead of it. And I think, I think for the most part, I think your team has been very professional so far. We're having, you know, you've asked for a departmental meeting, we're gonna have a meeting. Obviously, any information that I can give to you, I know I sent over the Memorial Drive as built, which is a huge piece of how you set up your project, right? That was a town project, you know, when we developed, when the town developed Memorial Drive, when the town purchased all of the land area of the RTD and Cirrus became on board. So there are, there is information that is flowing back and forth and I think it's just a matter of keeping that communication open.
I think, I just think that from the planning board's side also, there's sometimes we do think of things like kind of at the last minute. Like, oh, you know, what if we had this, you know, what about this idea? And so, or different views of the project that we'd like to see. And so that's why I'm wondering if it fits your schedule as well, if there's another, if there's another point where we can have an informal meeting so that we're trying to gather all these things, certain views that we'd like to see or the big context site plan or a little bit more information about those materials. That we're kind of doing it, you know, in an, you know, in an early stage so that when March comes or when you actually submit the application, really all the ducks are in a row.
Right.
And we've seen it all kind of before and we're just looking at it more formally now. Because like I said, I think we don't enjoy that long process either. We'd like to have it work efficiently, but while we're always obviously trying to make sure we have the best product for Ashland, so.
Yeah, I mean, part of this was to be transparent. This is our timeline, this is what we're working to, here's an idea of, you know, what some of the concepts we're thinking about. And it's the start of the conversation with your team, right?
Yeah, I'm.
And we hope that continues.
We very much appreciate you all coming today. We hope to see you again. I said formally or informally, whatever it works out. And I think, I think it's gonna be hard to find a person in Ashland who's not a fan of this project coming in. So it's just working through all the nitty-gritty details.
I do kind of follow up to that, because one thing, Anna kind of touched on it, but I, being a member of the Y in Framingham and knowing how busy it could get potentially if you're planning on 300 parking spots, that it's very, very well thought out about safety of that, because like that parking right there, right now, you're, I know you're not there, but like, please don't come back without that better design because we're gonna ask, I'm pretty sure our board will be asking you for that. So allowing for bicycles, there's kids, there's little kids that run out, you know that. So please try to be thoughtful about that.
One to do ahead of time, so we don't have to spend too much time dealing with it.
And luckily, I think the, the goals of a applicant like the YMCA who is about families, about kids, about people of different abilities, I would assume, it sounds like sustainability and I have to assume safety is a top priority for the organization as a whole.
Of course, it definitely is. I just wanna thank all of you so much for having us here tonight. I wanna thank everyone who tuned in at home for being here with us also. Big thank you to the team here. This is the dream team. This is a good crew. And when you're looking for a professional responsive team that's gonna be ready to work closely with you, you've got it. So we're excited to, you know, tackle this together. So good night and thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, I'm very impressed with you coming here and I think it's a good sign. And I'm, me personally, I think we have a good chance with this project to do it efficiently because you're here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. See you soon. Thanks, Peter. Yeah, I, I had heard the name a whole bunch of times with the Sustainability Committee, but I didn't, I've never met him before. Thanks, Rick. Thank you. Mm, mm, got it, okay. Yeah, so when, when, when I was introduced to him before, Peter will be back in a minute, but before the meeting started, I'm like, I don't think we've met, but I know that name, you know? Right, right, so. Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure. What was his role at that time? Oh. All right. No problem, we're just decompressing a little bit before starting up again. All right, so it's fun to talk about. Next on the agenda is the discussion of 10 to 60 Main Street. There you are, Peter. Like, where'd he go?
Sorry, yeah, I was just stopping the screen shift.
So can you explain again what we need to do tonight about the 40B project? And our comments, to submit comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So yeah, so I think everyone understands that the 10 to 60 Main Street was filed for 40B. The zoning board of appeals kind of will open the public hearing earlier this month and on Jan, January 7th. And as a whole, right, the zoning board of appeals has asked for comments from departments, from the planning board, just to get some feedback, right, from where everyone is, where people are feeling on that project. Speaking with the chairman, John Trefethan, he is just trying to reach out to all boards and committees to understand, like I said, what their kind of views are and maybe what some of the issues that one may have with the project. What are the pros, what are the cons? And so I am just, I had to put that on the agenda. Obviously, I'm wearing two hats these days, one with the planning board, one with the zoning board of appeals. And so I think this is an opportunity, is a, one of probably, probably the first opportunity for the planning board to share any comments that they have with the zoning board of appeals. These will be records, these will be put on record, obviously, they'll be submitted formally to the zoning board of appeals. Just in like a circumstance where the planning board would ask for comments from the Sustainability Committee and other design review committee. So with that said, I did provide in everyone's packet a copy of the letter that the planning board did put together and sign, I believe, last May when comments were issued to the, to mass housing regarding the application of the 10 to 60 Main Street project to mass housing in an effort for the site eligibility letter. Now, since then, obviously, mass housing issued the site eligibility letter, thus the, opening up the avenue for the applicants to file with the zoning board of appeals. And so I think it's on the agenda tonight just to talk about it. If people wanna take it home, email me comments, that's fine, we can do that. But obviously, this is just going through a process to develop comments. If the planning board would like to act in this manner to these zoning board of appeals.
What would be the, I mean, we've produced a very long but well-detailed letter, I think. What would be the harm? I think there's probably pluses and minuses, but of simply giving the letter that we previously produced as a committee to the zoning board of appeals. I mean, it's public information, obviously.
It's all part of the public record and we can do that, right?
I think the one thing we should add is, I remember there was one particular rendering at the end that we all really loved, that the planning board got, there was quite a bit of work to get to a rendering that we seemed to like. And so I think the zoning board of appeals would benefit from that particular rendering. What I would envision is a letter to the zoning board of appeals that says, listen, our comment to the state speaks for itself. Take it as you wish. There could be information there that will help you. And by the way, here's the rendering that we as a planning board worked multiple months, arguably years to get to so that you understand all of the work and effort that we undertook with the applicant and how close we got to a rendering that we believed as the Ashland planning board was consistent with our view for the downtown. Good luck. That's kind of what I envisioned. That way, the zoning board of appeals sees, oh, the planning board did all this work for this particular vision. With our letter, it gives a full context.
Are you talking about the rendering that was in a fairly small scale, very early on, where we kind of, early on in the new version of 10 to 60?
Yes, that I think we all liked.
Wait a minute?
Yes.
That one?
No, not that one. Maybe that one. Hold on, let me see.
That was the hand-drawn.
Was that the hand-drawn one? That might be it.
There was another one I, I can dig through.
Do we have the similar one, just so that I can reflect? This might be it, or it's a similar one.
I think it might be because I think we were noting that it was two, it's really four stories instead of three, probably.
And we liked it. Yeah, I mean, maybe we showed them, I don't think this is it.
No.
I think there was one more, there was one more after this. And maybe, maybe we. I'm trying to remember, maybe it's mentioned in this, hold on.
My question is, what is important from zoning board of appeals? What is it that they would need to weigh in at the end of the whole process? That's missing from this five pages?
Well, so they're gonna have to make a, excuse me?
From the feedback that we've already kind of put together?
From my, so from my standpoint, the feedback that we put together covers a lot of what they're looking at and obviously some of the waivers that they're being asked to grant, right? And so I think if our feedback, if there was additional feedback, it should be feedback pointed to the requested waivers by the applicant. And I'm happy to circulate more in, more detail what those waivers are, but it's regarding height. It's, you know, it's really, in this instance, it's height. This is a higher building than what was. This is a higher building than what was proposed. And also from a traffic setup, right, they're moving away, their proposal right now is proposing to use the two existing curb cuts when the plans in front of the planning board were to line up the major ingress and egress to the site through Pleasant Street. And this proposal right now has moved away from it. And so it is, it is a different site plan, you know, in comparisons from the one, I know Kate, you just pulled out one, which was almost, which was, which was also kind of a hand-drawn rendering and also that, but it was more of an aerial view. I think those are, so those are some of the biggest changes. And then some of the other waivers pertain to more wetlands, wetlands stuff. However, the applicant is also gonna have to go in front of the conservation commission at some point.
So I think that we, I, I mean, I, obviously, this can live as part of our statement, but if things have changed, I think we should try to, try to take a look where those, we would care about traffic. And so just say, the new plan does not line up, we don't think this is a good idea, we don't have to make it extensive. But I think, I think, given that that board is all volunteers like us, I think we're, maybe another set of eyes for them and for the community. And then, I haven't, I did not get to go to that meeting and I haven't watched the meeting, but I did hear people say, the applicant has made changes that the town asked them to. And I don't know who and when, so we, I would love to see what those are. I mean, it'd be nice to produce a list, right? The town asked me to do and I did it because I, I mean, I feel like we should be transparent about that, for one. Who in the town asked you to do what and did you do it? And it might be, I don't know, but I guess that's a little concerning if that really happened, but I would want to at least see what that is. And the town is who, and maybe the planning board wouldn't agree with that direction, just say so, I mean, that's all we can do.
Isn't this feedback required for tomorrow or asked, they asked for it for tomorrow? Am I like?
No, so the zoning board of appeals is going to be, the next hearing with the zoning board of appeals is gonna be on the 11th, February 11th.
Okay.
So we have time.
But our, but our meeting, next meeting is not until the 13th?
Correct.
So maybe it's important to look at the latest and the greatest package and look at it from the site plan and kind of look at comparisons. Because this, the letter that we had drafted had a lot more contextual kind of, and the history of where the design landed and why it was not the right project. That's what we focused on in that letter, but that's not probably important for zoning board of appeals. It's more a kind of the bird's view that we probably are not getting into in this.
You know, speaking with the zoning board of appeals, I think, I think mostly if not all the members understand that the project did go through an extensive review process by the planning board. It was a year-long process. They understand there is history to this project, right? It just didn't kind of form yesterday, right? And so I think our letter does tell that story, right? And I think including their images helps tell that story and to say, these are some of the concerns we still have, such as XYZ. And I think, you know, I can say that the next, the next meeting for that committee, for the zoning board of appeals is gonna be heavily focused on traffic, right? Our traffic consultant from MDM will be at the meeting. And they, that was kind of the first item that the zoning board of appeals and the applicant decide to kind of really vet through thoroughly before the next step is taken. So if a full letter has not been formed yet by the 11th, I think we could come back on the 13th and finalize it and then issue it. You know, this project, you know, from a town standpoint, the way the process is going to roll out is that on the, the project started on February 7th and right now, we are within that 180-day shot clock, right? To produce indoor, to actually to close the public hearing. And that is if no extensions are, if no extensions are granted by the applicant and obviously with understanding of the applicant and the town. From that point on, then we have, the town of Ashland has to formally submit a decision within 40 days after that 180 days. So obviously, I'm trying, the major point is, we're at the beginning of the 180 days, we're not at the end. But obviously, the sooner we could get comments to the zoning board, I think that will be appreciated by the zoning board of appeals.
We really need to have the plans in front of us. I mean, can we pull them up? Because we can at least start some notes of what we might comment on?
Just as a note, I'm happy to pull them up, I'm happy to share my screen.
While you're pulling it up, can I clarify that this rendering from March 7th is the one that we all had a positive reaction to? There was one more on May 5th and we had started comparing the two. And that's when they withdrew the application. So I, this is the one I was referencing. And what we could do if we give the zoning board of appeals our letter is both renderings and just comment that, as reflected in our letter to the state, this was our original liked rendering, followed by the second that we did not fully evaluate as the application approved. So that they have context for both. Just for clarity. So this is, this is the one. Thank you, Kate.
And as far as the traffic studies, the ones that was presented to us during the project was from 20, during the COVID time, that was the traffic studies that we used for the design development of what was presented to us.
That whole traffic study has been totally, their traffic study for the current project in front of the zoning board of appeals has, they've obtained, the new project applicant has obtained a different traffic engineer, Vanas Associates, and they created a traffic plan that is obviously molded to the proposed project.
So it's important, I don't know if any of you have seen it, because I think it's important to look at the site plan, new site plan, proposed site plan with that traffic study to connect it because the design that we looked at was, sounds like it's history now. So if that's what's important for zoning board of appeals, those are points that we should as a team focus on.
Just to make note, I agree. So if you come to the town's website, I sent the link in the Friday email. And it's obviously the 10 to 60 Main Street cases online. You will see the January 7th presentation and you'll also see embedded is a direct link to the YouTube for any zoning board member. And below, there are comments from the board of health, the sustainability committee and the affordable housing trust directly there. As you move down, you'll see the application and I can pull out the site plan. This is the building, how it sits today. You can see what is going to be retained is in gray, 10, and then obviously the front of 20. But from a site plan view, the renderings that we did see in front of the planning board, the main ingress and egress is gonna be right through here. Right now, the curb cut is gonna be here where it exists today. And then also out on Myrtle Street. And then right here in the interior of the site and or in the interior of the frontage, they will have a short-term parking area, accessible parking area, but also a parking area for Amazons and UPS trucks as they do daily deliveries. So the site plan has changed from what the planning board did review, from that overview. And like, and as you go through this information on the website, you'll see more color renderings and through their presentation. This is just obviously the site plan from the engineering standpoint. Yep.
Well, they've asked for feedback.
They did ask for feedback.
Do we have their, the text or how did that, how did that request come?
It was just verbally, yeah, it was verbally and.
During the meeting?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that's a, that's a good point. I'm not, I feel, so I feel strongly about the volunteer board asking for help with other eyes, if possible. But what I would, what might be the ask is, are there particular, like we do to design review. Hey, we've looked at this, here are some things we'd like to have you dig into or look. So it might be more appropriate to say, you have our, yeah.
And I think, I think we could put that in our letter, too, a little bit, to say, hey, and and communicate to the zoning board if there is, you know, if there's a certain item, please, you know, obviously email through. Yeah, there are some. There, there's, there's some. There's some commonality, there's similarities, but yeah, there's some differences. Yeah, agreed, agreed. We, okay. That's, I'm happy to.
Can you draft something like that?
Yeah, we can do that.
I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna ignore their, any actual question or request for feedback. I'm just not sure what, if it's not in here, I'm not sure what else we have.
I agree, I agree with you, Anna, that we already did it. However, is my position, working with the ZBA on this project, I also mechanically need, wanted to obviously present the request to the planning board. And I agree, you're taking the right approach. Yes, we did the work. Let's put it back in front of the zoning, you know, let's share our comments. Obviously, the zoning board of appeals also received all information regarding what the town sent into mass housing back in May, right? It's all public record. And so.
So they received this?
But I think it's, but I think it's made to reiterate the views of the planning board. And I think I can write a memo and obviously I'll send it around. And then we can kind of work through that supplemental process and that, using obviously the May 23rd letter.
Attached to this, attached to a couple drawings we want to pull out. And, but have your memo, have feedback on it. Then you and I can polish it off, the final version, that everyone can comment on the draft. And that we get it to them before their February 11th meeting.
Yes.
And then if they do have extra questions, yeah, get them right back to us. We'll put it on our agenda for the 13th.
Yeah, we'll do it.
You know, we can even say that, but if they have.
No, I agree. I just want to be responsive to the requests though. Well, but also opening the door that they may have particular things that we would be welcome our best shot at.
Sure. No, I think that's the right approach, in my eyes. Yeah, I look at it, I took some notes, Anna, obviously what you just noted, obviously I do have all the documents. And so I'll put a, you know, a couple paragraph, you know, a couple paragraphs together. Obviously, make it shorter, shorter suite and then. Yeah, and then obviously, I'll pass it along and we can kind of have something ready to go, you know, sooner rather than later. Yeah, no, and, you know, obviously we want to be respectful of their time and, yep.
I've had my microphone off too, sorry, everyone. Okay, so next thing on our agenda is the discussion of accessory dwelling units. The ADUs and the change in the state law and how to adjust our bylaws to be in alignment with that. So I think we left this last time of, where did we leave this last time? Anna had some.
So we had some, we had some comments?
Samples.
Yeah, Anna, there was some sample bylaws.
Yeah, that we, that we kind of looked at, but we didn't, actually, that was the meeting, you gave us the samples, but you weren't here. Yes.
We pulled some comments together and I was gonna reiterate, we made those comments, we sent them to the state and obviously we're there. We put them in. I think there was a couple of comments, you know, our DPW made and obviously we submitted everything, along with every other community. And I think, I think really, any day now, the state should be turning. And I think, I think really any day now the state should be turning those around. And then we'll be working from what the draft regulations were, excuse me, what the final regulations are going to be to produce a bylaw. And I know, Anna, you had a couple draft communities, is that correct? Or sample of communities?
I can't remember. I remember looking at the.
We didn't, we focused on the response to the state and we did not get into it. But one thing we did talk about, because Peter is sure they're going to give a draft bylaw. And we, I do recall this, we said we probably would be better off replacing ours, not trying to update ours. Like delete what is there, everything, make it simple. And the new, and the draft should be a good starting point. Well, I don't know, I personally think something should be on Springtown meeting. So I don't, if it doesn't come timely, I don't think we should wait.
I think it's just that, like in the NADIC example, for instance, I think in my reading of it, and that was something that was passed from NADIC before the regulations came out, I believe. And so in my view, and this hasn't gone through town council or anything like that, but there were things in the NADIC bylaws that I would not think would be allowed under the regulations. That they were asking, I didn't think some of the things would be allowed, but that's only my opinion. I think the thing is, yeah, we can. I think the thing is that in, it's just a matter of time. So I think we can pull some, some, to me, I think the NADIC one was way too complicated. I think we need to keep it very simple so that we can work through it before Springtown meeting. So that we can at least change our bylaw to align with what the state is going to put out there, whether it exactly meets. So that maybe we just have to tweak it according to the, according to the regulations to make sure, to hopefully only do this thing once. The issue is, we need someone to work on it, right? We need someone to put together that bylaw, to find the bylaw, to have it vetted, to, you know, look at it, to look at it regulation in relationship to our current bylaws. And so, you know, who's going to jump on and do that?
So we, way back, we said that Lisa had a draft for Ashland and we haven't gotten that, like we should start with that.
You know, I think after this meeting, I'll circulate anything that I have around with the draft bylaw. Obviously, I just, I'm looking at the email from Anna and Anna, you are correct, you did write a memo. And I think we sent that out, but I'll recirculate this. And then whatever I, information that I've been able to pull forward, I'll be able to circulate it and kind of take a look. Yeah, NADIC. Yeah, I'll just share it.
We did not. We should at least look at it.
I think it starts right here, B, it's going to be behind, yep.
Yes, you are.
No, you are.
Yes.
Why don't we just talk about that? I, for one, would prohibit short-term rental, you know, to not do short-term rentals. I think the goal is to provide housing. I don't think short-term rentals are housing. I think they're hotel rooms. And so that to me would actually take business away from local hotels, instead put them in short-term rentals. So I don't think we need to get into that, I don't think we need to get into that mired situation. I think it defeats the purpose. Yeah, I mean, we're supposed to be providing housing and I don't think that provides housing.
I personally, just to keep this moving, would say prohibit now and it can be changed. Because the conference we went to last year, it was like the community's out in the Berkshires. Like they, that's why they did it, because workers can't even have a place to live.
Prohibit it in the EDU.
Yeah. And I would be open and we aren't the arbiters of our community. We're just trying to do our best to put something out there to, to have us not look like we don't care about updating our bylaws to be compliant.
But that's the thing, if it's by right, my understanding was.
Apply for a building permit.
Yes, my understanding was that the regulations say, because it's by right, it doesn't go to either authority. You know, it goes, it's by right, it goes right to the building commissioner unless your outline is a specific circumstance about, the ADU wants a special permit or. It usually goes to the ZBA.
That would go to the zoning board of appeals and just.
Well, I mean, if it's like a regular variance, but they're, so I guess maybe related to this, communities have said, one only. But they have a special permit process for another one.
That is correct.
That's what I'm saying.
And I, and I don't know.
Well, I think in that instance, right, so I think there's two things, right? I think the regu, the draft regulations, to me, were not clear on pre-existing non-conforming lots and/or houses. When you talk about a.
If it's even allowed.
Correct. So that's where I might, I kind of want to see what the regulations say, right? Now, if you're extending a pre-existing non-conformity, right? It's typically going to be a special permit through the zoning board of appeals, right? And so I kind of want to see what those regulations say. I agree that when these regulations came out, the state made it very clear, and to speaking to this point, to reemphasize what Tricia was saying, what Deepa was saying is that it goes, it's by right. It goes to the building commissioner, right? They, you file the site plan, you know, with the setbacks, X, Y, and Z, and this is what I'm looking to build, right? It's been very clear that towns are not going to, you know, these have to be similar to what a regular house would, the process a regular house would go through, right, from a residential standpoint. So if you just had a regular lot, right, a lot, a Form A lot, that process is, hey, I'm going to build this house and this is what I'm going to do and I'm going to go to the building commissioner. There's no site plan review, right? And so they made it clear that there's no site plan, they don't want site, it's not necessary to go through a site plan review process for a EDU, right? So that is what I picked up on from the state.
Yeah, I think the things I was thinking about that were in the NADIC regulation, I think that they, and again, it was before the regulations came out, that they, that there was a lot of different little circumstances that they were shooting toward a board. And I'm like, I don't think you can do that because the house doesn't have to do that, the main house doesn't have to do that. So the ADU doesn't have to do that. That's the point they made again and again in the regulations.
Yeah.
So.
Yep, I'm sorry. Can I just go back to that first point though? So the question I think that we have to say is, do we want somebody to be allowed to get a second EDU by a special permit?
No.
More than one?
I, I guess I'm going the low impact, keep it simple to bring, and these can all be changed. We've learned this, right? And like, why, why do we think our zoning has to be so stagnant, Anna? It does not. Right, and we can amend it when we hear from the community and people are saying, like, why can't we have two all over the place? And then we can.
I'm fine with that too.
I think we just overthink sometimes. Yes. Which we are allowed. That's one thing we are allowed to have some.
Yeah, but why is that restrictive? That's just saying, an ADU has to follow the same rules that a house has to follow.
No, they are, you are, we are allowed to make like, like some, that it has to be sort of behind the house. That's my read of the state law, the last that it was.
Right, but that's not, but that's not being restrictive, I don't think. It's just saying, to me, that's just, if you're saying it has to be in the same building envelope, it's, or it has to be in the same area that a house is allowed. It just means that an ADU can't cross the setbacks either.
Yeah, right.
You know, without a variance from the. No.
No. So why wouldn't it be allowed the same as what you could build? Because it gives flexibility. And don't forget, the most this can be is 900 square feet.
Right.
It cannot be more than 900 square feet.
Yeah, I think, I think it's the height, I think it should be, again, match the height that's allowed on the lot.
That's allowed, yeah.
Because. Because, because it means, well, we're having the ideas here, that's not the language of an.
We have two sides on Main Street. Like if you're on Main Street, you can be, you can have the MBTA access from downtown or from 135. So I think the way NADIC has it is a half mile. So there says, an EDU shall provide a minimum of one off-street parking space when located a half mile or more from the commuter rail station. And I'm suggesting that because we have more access points to the MBTA, that for me, I'm okay with making it longer. Like one mile, one parking space when you're a mile or more from the commuter station is something I think is more appropriate for Ashland. I don't think we need to say one parking space if you're a half mile.
That meets, so what NADIC did, they reiterated the law.
It's the state law.
It's the state law.
Yes.
110%. You could clear, you could waive all parking requirements.
We cannot ask you to have parking if you're within half a mile. I like the mile because if I'm building that and I'm, and I'm thinking that I'm going to help supplement my income, I have to think if I think it's going to be with someone with a car or not to make it practical. I guarantee you, it could cause parking issues in neighborhoods, but like. No, I like the mile. I think it's. You can walk a mile in 20 minutes. And, and again, if these get built, it is going to be a developer, it's going to be small developers like us. Do I think it's worth it?
So you're saying you must provide a parking space if you're over a mile from the commuter rail station? If you're under, it's your choice if you want to provide a parking space or not. Knowing that, knowing that not providing a parking space may limit the amount of people that, that take you up on renting, yeah.
So the only thing I think we are allowed to do is have some design about it has to be. No, I don't think you can do that because as long as it meets building code, we cannot, that's not our purview. But, but I think you are, say it has to be quote subservient to, I don't have all the right words. I've read a couple drafts of different things and I believe you are allowed. So like, you don't want them to put the ADUs, for instance, in the front yard, even if they have setbacks. And I think we are allowed to say certain things like that.
The thing is, it's assuming that the ADU would be less attractive than the actual house. Which I'm not sure is always the case. Sometimes it's a nice opportunity to put a really cute little house in front of something that's not so pretty.
No, I get it. I think, I mean, Marcelo had a lot of thoughts about that and I don't have his brain about that and he's not on our board. But we cannot, if it meets building code, we, that's not our business. Yeah, yeah.
Well, the thing is, the thing is, for most properties, I mean, everything in, I think the vast majority of Ashland is zone RA, right? And there's a 40-foot setback for an RA zone, right, front setback. And so there's just not that, you have to have a pretty big lot to have your house sit more than 40 feet back. Or at least so much back that you can now put another house in front of your house and have space, unless, unless it's attached to. So I'm not sure that, I'm not sure there's going to be many circumstances unless the parcel is very big. And still that ADU is sitting 40 feet back from the street. So.
So the only open issue we said is the pre-existing non-conforming, which we had said on the other conversation, fine, as long as they can meet setbacks, in my opinion.
That's my opinion too.
So Peter's waiting to see if the state law says something different.
And that's where I'm kind of, that's, that's the one.
Yeah.
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay. Yeah.
Along with that, do, are we going to ask for placeholder in town meeting?
I already have.
Okay, great.
It's already, it's already taken care of, yep.
Well, we can also start circulating to the public, because we're doing our best, we've thought about it, we've read them, we've read the law, right? Peters went to things, but we're, we're a small portion of. Yeah.
I think, I think as long as the ideas are in there, we can manipulate.
I have some stuff, I can work with.
And I think it's for the existing non-conforming, we talked about this before, I think that is, and it's, it's a typical part of existing non-conforming, too. That as long as the ADU, or the, in in case the addition of a house. Meets the, meets the setbacks, all the setbacks that exist, the house can be non-conforming, the lot can be non-conforming. But if the ADU meets all the setbacks, it's fine. Right, it doesn't matter that the house is non-conforming on the other side of the lot.
That's correct.
Or that the lot itself is a thousand square feet short of being in a conforming lot, it doesn't really matter. As long as it meets, as long as the AD meets all the setbacks and height requirements, it's in the rules, it doesn't matter if the house is outside the rules.
You're not expanding anything.
Right.
And you're not making anything more detrimental.
That's right, you're not increasing the non-conformity in any way. And that allows, because there's a lot of non-conforming lots out there.
Yeah, I think um, I think this will come together easier than the MBTA.
That is, that is not saying much. I think if you can get it in the bylaw, we'll work, I can work to get it in the language of the bylaws in general. That we've kind of established with the MBTA and the kind of, the clarity that we're trying to. Okay, yep, that sounds good. Any other comments on that? Okay. All right, the other things we have on the agenda are more of our typical stuff. Why don't we take care of the meeting minutes quick? Um, and then we'll be done with all the stuff we have to do. And I'm just gonna, so all we have is the January ninth ones, is that right?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay, I haven't had a chance to look at them, so if we can just take a minute. I did read these, I think I'm fine, I couldn't remember.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, there were some, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I do remember that, that meeting.
Yep.
Magic.
Make a motion, are you still?
Um. I think I'm good, if you guys read through it and didn't, I don't see anything jumping out at me.
I make a motion to approve the January ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes as presented.
And roll call vote?
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye, so um. All right, so um. I think the other thing um. That we should just talk about briefly tonight, um. I guess it's just under administrative matters, that, just the the process of, so Marcelo did officially put in his resignation. And that position is being posted.
Yeah, so that po- that 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 position is posted up, it's online, they're collecting talent banks.
So it's already up?
Yep.
Okay.
And there'll be, there's actually gonna be a um, uh, in tomorrow's town manager's newsletter that goes out, there's going to be a note. That speaks to vacancies on open boards. Obviously, the planning board, that vacancy is going to be highlighted as one of the, uh, one of the, one of the seats.
And how long are we looking to have that open before we, we have forty-five days to fill the seat? So, if we're, if we're gonna fill it, so.
I just wanna felt, are we putting the design review in there, too?
Yeah, so design review actually has an open seat, that's actually, if you go to the Talent Bank, the uh.
Is that in the newsletter, do you know?
I have not seen the newsletter, the actual article, indoor, the the language. I was just spoke to our communications manager, and she just said that, yes, planning board's in there, and that's where I kinda left it.
Okay, well, we'll see tomorrow, we can just put it in the next one.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, so, um, but do you know if there's a, do we leave it, is there a certain amount of time we need to leave it open? I I don't.
I don't think there's a minimum number, a number of days indoor, you know, I think, in like any job post, it's, you know, two weeks minimum, you know, two weeks minimum. Whatever that is, um, I spoke with Susan Ro, excuse me, Susan Ro, Susan Roby, about um, the select board's next meeting. And I think that's going to be on February fifth, and then that would maybe follow by the meeting on the nineteenth. Um, but February fifth is their next meeting.
So we should, um, February fifth sounds quick. But at least we should, um, I think in February, we should try to coordinate a date with the select board to have that joint meeting. I mean, granted, if we get some applications, of course, right? Um, but at least start thinking about a date, so that we're not scrambling to do that. And I think also, we should um, find the questions that we used when Marcelo came on aboard. I'm sure I have them as well. I think there were five questions, we may want to look at those, modify those, I don't remember if they were of that time, or if they were very general questions. Um, and I would suggest, I mean, this will be together with the two boards, but I would suggest that we have those questions and we, and we send them to any applicants in advance. Yeah, I don't think we did last time, and so I think sometimes it was a struggle to understand the question and answer the question versus being able to really think about it. I I think is more.
I mean, I guess I would say, it's, it's nice to kinda keep it to that, but I wouldn't promise that nobody asks another question either.
Oh, no, 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 I don't think.
But I think it's, you kinda have to, if, get people prepared, I think, if you want.
Yeah, I don't think it was meant to be restrictive, it's just like, I think this is what we did last time, to kinda make sure we generated some, um, have some equality across the questions to candidates, you know? I think there were, yeah, I I think so. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure we have those somewhere. Forgot Anna wasn't here. Made a decision about something. So Anna, we were just talking about, um, we finished the meeting minutes, we were talking about the open position. So it is, Marcelo has officially put in his resignation letter, the, the, the position has been posted, it's going to, it's on the website. It's going to be um, in the town manager's newsletter tomorrow. Um, we weren't sure if the design review committee ones were gonna be listed in there as well, um, I'll have to see. Um, and then we're.
To my knowledge, nobody has filled out a talent bank form.
Right, but it's, yeah, it's just, it hasn't, it's a matter of a day. She, I believe she is interested in applying, but I do not think she has applied yet. Um, so, but we were talking about to make sure we at least have a calendar date, given that we have forty-five days to fill the position. That we um, have a calendar date, that we start working out a calendar date with the select board for at least a placeholder for that discussion. And also, I had mentioned that there's a, there's a list, I think of five questions that we put together when we filled Marcelo's spot. And it would be good to dig those up again and see what they are, and see if they're still, um. Maybe in sitting in my, uh, my saved email, or saved, uh, you know, um. Mile, yeah, you probably have them, too. Yeah, I mean, I think I have the, I I'm sure I have the, 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 yeah, yeah, the final version.
So, planning board questions for associate?
Were there just three?
I have three, and it's dated February eleventh, two thousand thirty, twenty-three.
That would. Yeah, that sounds the, so I think you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause he, he just finished his third year, so this, it would have been maybe January of twenty twenty-two? In there somewhere?
Yeah, so this. This was to the select board. I'll, I made a note, I'll try to, I'll try to dig around.
I'll dig around, too, and see if we can, it's just be, it'd be a good starting point.
Yeah.
So it's not, we're not totally re. I think it's, I believe it's a two-year slot.
Yeah. Well, it's, it'll be a Michael's.
Well, it's important to note that we're, that we're filling a position for a matter of months. And then the position is open for two years at the election, and Kate's position is open for a five-year seat. So it'll be a five-year seat and a two-year seat. No, he would be.
Marcelo wouldn't have been running for a seat. However, if you resign, right, and you, if you resign mid-year, right? It's the, it's, it's the bylaws that it's up to the planning board and the select board. Try to gather talent bank forms, and try to fill that seat temporarily. However, at the next election cycle, that seat then goes on the ballot. So Mark. Correct, only for two years. Correct, so there will be, this upcoming election, there'll be two seats on the ballot. One expiring in twenty twenty-seven, and then one is fired in twenty thirty. Correct, and would therefore run as the. That's true. Whoever, if someone is. Correct. Correct.
Yeah, there's an election regardless, because no one in the seat has to run.
Well, but it's not, it's literally only till May, and then they choose to run or not, Anna.
Yeah.
Well, the two or a five.
I am not sure what the language says, so we'll look tomorrow, it's probably, it's already out there, probably, so.
Or a five-year term. Both, right.
Kate will go for the two-year term, because she's done. Um, yeah, so we'll look at what it says tomorrow, but yeah, then we can get it out to Facebook or whatever, just see if we can. Make sure the word is out there, so, okay, so that's important. Um. Cause it is a good opportunity for someone to kinda test it out and just see. You know, I, I hate sitting in the seat for three hours, or, you know, or whatever, so, okay.
But the pay, I mean, really.
Yeah.
You know?
You're very easy to please, then, Kate. So is there anything, um, okay, so our next, our next meeting is February thirteenth, that is a three-week break, people. Because of the way the holidays fall, um, so that we can get the other homework done in between, which is good. Um, does anyone have anything to report on in the reports, reports on planning topics? Mark gave a little thing about the comprehensive plan, but.
I should just give another quick that, um.
Summary of what happened?
There, well, we're at another kinda critical point, so generally have goals decided, again, they, last time Jen Goldson spoke. Those are still up for grabs technically, and we're working on, there, there were proposed draft strategies, technical working sessions. So they're taking the feedback and taking until March, so we won't have a meeting in February to re-present and kinda rank those. Yeah, starting, they'll be meeting with towns, departments. But what I wanted to say is that coming up, it will be getting into the end of that phase, which is, her, her plan is to report to a joint planning board, select board. So we'll have to have that, there, it would be after the twentieth of March, for sure, but I think she did not give a timeline, but coming up.
Okay.
And so the final phase in their process is then you start drafting.
And how long is that phase?
I think it depends, I think it depends how, I think they take the first stab, but it depends if we like what they did, I mean. How much rework, um, that kinda stuff, so.
Okay.
I mean, it won't be ready for the May town meeting.
No, 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 that was just.
Um, I assume we should be able to make the fall town meeting.
Oh, great.
I would think.
Was that the goal? I don't remember.
I think possibly, yeah.
All right, wow. Any other, um.
I just wanna make a quick note, on February, on February fifth, um, the fire department has kinda spearheaded the re, um. The updating of what's known as the hazard mitigation plan. Uh, MAPC's been doing that work, MAPC did that about five or six years ago. Um, it's an important plan, because it's for federal funding from FEMA. You have to have an updated, up-to-date current hazard mitigation plan, so Keith, uh, Keith Roby's been kinda working on this, and I was part of a meeting this week. Um, but MAPC will be at the select board's meeting on February fifth to give a presentation. So just to give you heads up, um, if that is something that you kinda wanna tune into, obviously, it's going to be a Zoom meeting. Um, if you don't wanna come here in person, um, but more information will be sent out regarding that invitation.
Okay.
So, so I make a quick note of that, uh, other than that, I have no updates.
All right, anyone else, updates? Okay, then if there's nothing else. I will make a motion to adjourn at nine forty-three PM, is there a second?
Second now.
And a roll call vote?
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Nope. Nope.